The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll go to approval of the agenda.
Motion to approve. Second.
Second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? Move to citizens' comments.
We have two tonight. The first one is Marlon Cunningham. The first one is Mr. Huntley Gordon.
You, Mr. Gordon.
Good afternoon or good evening. I was here in December 11th at your meeting, and we discussed Fairview Station. And several things have happened since that previous discussion. I've received documentation from the city engineer, Will Owen, on the 14th of January regarding the additional one-foot sidewalk addition to Fairview Station. I could discuss this further at this time, or if you would like to discuss this as part of the agenda under bonds and letters of credit at that time, I would be willing to be added to the agenda and taken up if you feel that's more appropriate.
Is that Willowcrest?
No, sir, it is. Fairview Station.
I don't think you're on our agenda if you want to talk, if you want to...
I'm not on the agenda, but I would request it to be added to the agenda if you would like, if you wish.
We've already voted on it, on the agenda. I don't know if anyone wants to bring it back.
As, as a point of reference, the proper matter going forward would be for Mr. Gordon to present to you whatever he needs to present.
If we'd like to add...
And at that time, if it was a member, a member of the planning commission's pleasure, they could offer a motion for or against anything during their business or any other time during the meeting.
Okay. Thank you, sir. If you want to go ahead and give us some information on it, yes, sir?
Absolutely. On October 9th, 2018, the planning commission established a performance bond of $65,000 for Fairview Station due to outstanding vinyl topping, street trees, and some minor grading. In between the October 9th, 2018, and the December 11th, 2018, meeting, it was discovered that the sidewalk was four feet instead of five feet, and that's when I came before you on the 11th of December. Over the winter, the Board of Commissioners this past month has established a sidewalk fund, and we would request that a maintenance bond be established per the January 14th, 2019, letter from the city engineer of $83,000, which is the 10% amount for a maintenance bond because the total improvements were $829,000, and accept a donation into the sidewalk maintenance fund in the amount of $15,000. The one-foot sidewalk at 125% was $17,100, making the actual cost $13,680. So we just are requesting that a $15,000 donation into the sidewalk fund act in lieu of a five-foot sidewalk for Fairview Station. And accept a maintenance bond for $83,000 and the subdivision to your city.
Thank you, sir. We actually have the sidewalks, the motion to adopt the sidewalk fund on, in our agenda If anyone would like to entertain anything with that or wait for new business.
Mr. Collins, can we add this at any time in the meeting, or do we have to add it right now? I didn't quite understand what you said about adding it.
You can add it at any time in the meeting. Any member can bring up any matter. The simplest way to do it would be under your business, under individual business, if you wanted to add something during that time for consideration.
I guess that's what the question I was asking.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
It would be in the nature of a motion to amend, to improve agenda and add an item that would have to be approved first.
Yeah.
And then you do, or take what aggression.
If I don't have anything right now, Mr. Gordon will go, will continue citizens' comments. We'll go to the next.
Thank you, sir.
Mr. Cunningham, yes, thank you, sir. Mr. Cunningham, come on up.
Yes, I'm, I'm here about the Sweetbrier Springs Phase Two. I was under the impression that I would be added to the agenda and did not know until I, actually this afternoon at about four o'clock, that I was not on the agenda. And I was just trying to see if that would be a possibility of me getting on the agenda still. I know I had talked to a few of you about this, and like I said, I had no idea until just a little while ago I wasn't going to be on, and I'm asking to be put on the agenda.
In what regards?
The curbs that was put in the subdivision, they were put in at 24.6 as opposed to 36. It was, the whole subdivision's put in in curbs now, and it's actually six inches narrower than what the plan's called for. And that's what I was wanting to talk about, and I'd actually called, you know, the engineer, the city engineer to talk to him about it this past couple of weeks also. And like I said, I was within the impression I was on the agenda tonight, and I didn't know I wasn't until a little while ago.
As a point of clarification, just so we'll all know where we, where we are, I met on site with Mr. Cunningham, as did Mr. Sullivan. I believe Mr. Owen's been out there. I know Todd Ratcher from our public courts department's been out there. And the principal discussion we had at the time was concerning the width of the street, which I believe was drawn at 29 feet and is constructed at 28 feet. There are sections of the asphalt that will be 27 and a half, or 27 feet based on the installation of the curb and gutter as it exists today. The primary questions we had, and there are two, the first was a waiver considered by this board to go from 29 feet to 28 feet as far as the section width for the road itself. The section was the staff's concern regarding storm drain inlets and their sizing if we were to go from 28 feet of asphalt to 27 feet of asphalt in these certain sections. The discussions that were had specifically were that we would need to get some documentation from an engineer asserting that the storm drain inlets would sufficiently serve the subdivision if they were to be reduced by six inches from 24 inches to 18 inches in depth from the curb into that, into the edge of the curb to keep the storm drain out of the asphalt. That was our specific discussion. We're waiting on some engineering drawings back for that. We have not received those, thus the item was not put on the agenda. It was an ignorance to, or an effort to prevent it from being on the agenda. We simply did not have the technical documents we need to make a relevant decision based on those two things. I know that Mr. Owen has been to the site and may have some other commentary on this. Our primary concern on the staff side would be the consideration of the storm drain inlets being a part of the asphalt or the driveway where they were originally designed to be a part of the curb and gutter and not a part of the roadway. That's our primary concern for you, specifically the maintenance of that in installing asphalt in the corners or the 90 degrees where the storm drain inlet would be in contact with the asphalt and the curb. So that was our, original discussion was to have those removed six inches to see if the storm drain would work or if the entire roadway needed to be widened to the, to the, to the approved 29 feet. So that, that's how we got there tonight. Absent of those drawings and documents, we did not include this on the agenda. That said, clearly you're welcome to add that if it's your, if it's your pleasure. We just want to make sure everyone understood where we were specifically in the process.
Thank you, sir. I think just from, I've spoken to Mr. Cunningham a couple of times, I think he's trying to save time, so I don't know if anybody would be interested in doing it in, in anticipation of the city staff getting what they need and saying it's okay. It could be voted on and said, you know, if, if staff approves it and says that the smaller drains are better, then it could proceed, and it saves them a month from coming back next month, just throwing out there. But I think that's just the time is what, is what I've gotten is trying to not lose another month of time of trying to find an answer or a resolution. But if I don't have anything, I'll move on from staff comments or from citizens' comments, sorry. Go to approval of the minutes from the April 9th, 2019 regular meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second.
First and a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Can you oppose? All right, we'll move into new business. Item one, final plat, Sweetbrier subdivision phase four, four proposed lots on two acres, property located at Sweetbrier Road, map 22 parcel 130.03, R20 zoning district, property owned by Philip Caldwell. Mr. Caldwell, present. Any staff notes or nothing?
The only comments we would have would be, this was same thing that was brought forward last month as ready for a final. It was approved then with the discussion of the sidewalks being shown. They have, they're still shown as proposed sidewalks, and again, that was the only discussion last month is whether or not they were going to stay or possibly go to that sidewalk fund in lieu of that.
So the plans themselves haven't changed at all, correct?
That is correct.
If I recall correctly, these sidewalks will not tie into any others. Is that correct? So basically, we have sidewalks to nowhere. And Mr. Collins and Mr. Potter, I guess as a point of clarification, the sidewalk fund's not been approved yet by this board, correct? It's on for tonight, though.
It, it would not be required to be approved by this, by this board. The planning commission can grant a waiver on sidewalks at any time as a part of their standard course of business. The sidewalk fund was created by the Board of Commissioners so that there would be a known use for any funds that were deposited to the sidewalk fund. So in essence, the planning commission would simply be granting a waiver if they were to waive sidewalks in lieu of a, of the 75% value being remitted to the, to the city. So we could amend the subdivision regulations, however, it's not required. It's simply a waiver requested by the developer to the planning commission. The planning commission can elect to or not to grant the waiver.
If we do grant the waiver, those funds would then be paid into, no, yeah, those would be paid into the sidewalk fund if...
Yes, sir. A sample motion would be grant the waiver pursuant to developer remitting 75% of the anticipated construction cost to the city's sidewalk fund, similar to that.
And just reading through the minutes, I think we kind of talked about this last month, and then we're, I guess y'all were going to, the city staff is going to give Mr. Caldwell about how much or the fund, because I remember he made a comment of he might be better off just putting them in. I don't know if we, if we ever talked about that amount or if there's any discussion of that. I guess if we waive it, do we just let the staff decide the amount with them outside, or are we setting an amount tonight?
The resolution states 75%.
75%.
So...
It'd be assumed value and then 75% of that, or...
Yes, sir.
Or the standard? Okay.
Do we know what those engineered costs are right now? Is it 75% of the engineered costs?
As far as the sidewalks in this specific, I do not, Mr. Caldwell may know, I do not know the specific number, or Mr. Owen may know, I do not know.
Mr. Caldwell, are you okay with that, paying into that sidewalk fund in lieu of putting this, installing those sidewalks there?
If I said, let's do sidewalks, my only concern is, is these four lots, I don't have any immediate plans to build on them. I'm, you know what I mean? Am I required to pay that upfront, or if I'm doing sidewalks?
This is a discussion we had last month.
So I'm okay with whatever gets me final, and if, I mean, I would just soon do it as I pull a building permit, like I guess every subdivision does that now, or does the sidewalk have to go in?
I get the sidewalks inspected at the, at the final, final plat, so I guess the question is, would he pay it at that time, or is he paid upfront? Are you paying it now? To be able to get approved now, it'd be, I think it would just be difficult to try and in three years go, oh, yeah, we approved that, he owes us money.
Yeah.
I think you would rather try and take it now.
Correct.
As opposed to if you built the sidewalks, would you, would they have to be built on the front end?
No, you would build them with the houses, but I think the concern and the discussion has been they're just going to be out there. They're not connected to anything else. They're just going to have four houses of sidewalks that don't necessarily have any connectivity or any walkability. And so is it, is there any point of putting them there?
Right.
Mr. Owen.
Also, as a point of clarity, if, if the sidewalks were to be constructed, again, the normal practice here in Fairview and in most communities is they would be constructed at the time each individual house is constructed. However, before the plat could be recorded in any situation, we would require a bond to cover the cost of the installation of those sidewalks. So it's not as though, if, if the agreement was to install the sidewalks, then yes, the actual cost of construction would not be incurred by the developer until those houses were being built. However, there would be a cost in providing a bond to the city to cover the cost of those sidewalks until they were built. So it's not a, it's not a completely no-cost alternative, so to speak.
Your bond would increase if they stayed in place right now, but you could revisit it later to pay the fund, is that...
Yeah, you could.
Mr. Caldwell, out of curiosity, you said you don't have a plan to build anything right now. What is your timeline? Like, what is your estimate right now? When do you plan to actually start building? Do you have a timeline?
No, I mean, they were there, and the subdivision street went in, so it was a perfect timing to get them in a position where I could, you know, do something with them as I got around to it. But right now, I have no plan to, to build on any one of those right away.
Yeah, okay. Thanks. Appreciate your honesty.
Is, just a point of clarification, just again, not trying to muddy the water, but try to clear it up. Paragraph one of the resolution reads that "In circumstances where the sidewalk installation in new or proposed residential, retail, or commercial and/or industrial developments may not be reasonable, suitable, or effective but are otherwise required by the city's subdivision regulations and/or design review manual, the Board of Commissioners hereby resolves that funds for the construction of said sidewalks may be remitted by the builder or developer to the city." So in that case, if the lots are conferred or the owner sells those, then rather than require the sidewalk be built by the builder at that time, then they could remit the construction cost for the sidewalks to the city effectively, and they would, they would then be issued a CO based on the remission of those funds. It's not required to be submitted by the developer, but at some point before that, that parcel is developed, there'd have to be some decision made. So it's not necessarily imposed on the developer. You can simply waive the sidewalks in lieu of the 75% construction cost being payable to the city of Fairview, and then at whatever such time that it's constructed or would have been constructed, then that waiver would apply.
But let me ask you, I mean, if he's not going to build right now, he's certainly not going to pull a bond right now for this stuff, I don't think, are you? You're not going to...
I'd rather not.
You'd rather not?
No, sir.
So would it not be better whenever you decide to pull your bond, whether you come and ask us, and if we give you a waiver with that sidewalk, if we give him a waiver to put in, to pay to the fund, the sidewalk fund, then he wouldn't have to put a bond up for that sidewalk, which at that point, would it save him money?
I think...
I guess is, is my question. If he's not doing anything right now...
At that, at that point, Mr. Power, that he wouldn't remit anything. At the time that the lot is built on, where, and that will be the time the sidewalk will be required to be installed, then the builder at that point would remit those funds. Mr. Caldwell would not be a party to that, to that thing. The waiver goes along with the property itself.
Okay. I guess you just run the risk of if you leave sidewalks on the plat, the builder at that time might just throw sidewalks in and not visit, revisit that, I guess is the question.
I would, I would suggest removing the sidewalks from the plat. We have a waiver that stated that funds would be remitted to the city's sidewalk fund. Remove the sidewalks from the plat, and at the time that a CO is issued, before, before the CO is issued, then the value, 75% of the value of the sidewalks have to be remitted.
How, how would that flag on, on inspection? How would, how would Mike and know not to give a CO, there's no sidewalks?
That, that would be on our side as a part of the management of that, of that plat.
Yeah, I was concerned about the trigger factor to let him know at that particular time. If it's two to five, 10 years down the road...
We would manage it the same way we manage a performance bond.
Okay.
They all have, they all have calendar expirations as well, so we would just simply manage it the same way.
But I think you would have to put up a bond right now in order to get a final plat, correct? He wouldn't be able to, have to be able to hold off on a bond in order to get it final recorded, you'd have, we would have to have a bond in place. Is that correct?
That is correct. It would just not require the installation of the sidewalks.
Yeah.
Sidewalks would be waived.
If we went that route, right.
Could we not just tie it to the building permit? So when you pull that building permit, that's, you pay that into the sidewalk fund at that time?
We would on our side, yes, sir. We, that's how we would monitor that.
Okay.
It just scares me. I mean, we're discussing four-foot sidewalks tonight, and we, the whole neighborhood went in with four foot instead of five foot. It's going to be so hard to micromanage, I guess, an individual lot to ensure that it's not going to get sidewalks where it is or if they pay, you know?
Sure. Understood.
Can a new final plat be submitted with some notation where the sidewalks are showing, waiver's been granted, written in, something along those lines? So the builder sees that, we would see that, just hopefully so we catch it better.
My preference at that note where there would be not to include the sidewalks drawn on the document. I, I think that will lend to some confusion where there's a waiver noted and a sidewalk drawn.
I'm saying not just a note on the side, but actually in the drawing where the sidewalk is, waiver for side, you know, I don't know. Owen? Mr. Owen? Sorry.
I have a son named Owen, so I apologize. That's fine. If, if, if the desire is to show the sidewalks on the plat with the intention of allowing in the future each individual lot to opt out of that by paying in that 75% of the cost, then I think you leave the sidewalk shown on the plat, and I don't know that I would add a note because at the time that construction occurs, there may not be a sidewalk fund or there may not be an option to opt out. I, you know, I just don't know that, there's some variables there that are unknown.
Oh, you, excuse me, but you would give each lot, as it's being built, the option to put a sidewalk or not? Is that right? Is that what I'm hearing you say?
Once, once this plat is created, those lots and recorded, those lots exist individually. So us four could go buy those four lots, and we could do...
You could put a sidewalk? If you wanted to put a sidewalk, and then the guy next to you could elect not to put a sidewalk, and he could put it in the fund?
Unless there's something on, unless there's something on the plat or within the administrative part of it that would disallow that, that could potentially be a scenario.
And do you have, do you have a rough number of what sidewalk is per linear foot?
So it's, it's approximately 1,710 linear feet of sidewalk. At, at $6 a square foot, that would total $10,260, and then 75% of that would be $7,695.
Is it 1,700 feet, or is it just where it fronts that road there?
I'm sorry, 1,700 square feet.
Square feet.
Excuse me, 1,700 square feet.
And that is per square foot price?
$6 per square foot.
So $2,040.
Yeah, that's more.
And so 75% is like $1,500.
No, no, no. 1,710 square feet.
Times...
Times six.
$10,000.
$10,260.
So like $7,500.
Yeah.
Maybe I was just trying to get a feel for the number if it was irrelevant or not, but that'll be...
Quick question. So if the final plat shows a sidewalk, that would mean that, like every subdivision that has them go in at building permit, how do you, like, who goes out and double checks them then that the sidewalk went in?
When you get your, when you release your bond to ensure it's there. Is that correct?
So I may be, I may be, all the neighborhoods I very built in, the developer developed it, the builders built the sidewalks in front of each individual lot.
Correct, but still, still the developers, responsibility for the sidewalks, their bond is covering those sidewalks. Correct?
Yes.
If, if I was the builder on this particular project and I bought an individual lot, first thing you're going to look at is your setback requirements for that particular lot, and that dimensions or nomenclature are legend on the side of your plat. Something should be in there at that time identifying that this lot is not, has a bond set aside in lieu of sidewalks, and therefore, all of those will not be allowed to build sidewalks, or all of those must build sidewalks. You should not be able to go, like you said, an individual, one does, one does not. It should be right, written right where the setbacks are.
I don't think that was the intention of individual lot verification.
I know it's not the intention, but they said it was a hypothetical situation, and I'm, I'm of the opinion that you got to have something right in your face so the inspectors are not going to see it. So if you don't see it, it could, two or three years from now, five years from now, we may have a whole different crew of inspectors, and they don't know all this. So it's got to be written, and I personally don't want to omit the sidewalks. I know they go nowhere, but if we're going to have sidewalks, we should have sidewalks. But if we're going to do that, then it needs to be marked where they have to be found by the exist, the now inspector or the new inspector without, out in the confusion.
And, and if you feel, and, and the rest of this board feels that sidewalks should be there, then we can vote it as is, and sidewalks are on the plat, and it could, they can be there. Yeah.
The one thing that does make this different from other previous developments where there's quote sidewalks to nowhere, there, there's no undeveloped property on either end of where this sidewalk's going to be. So in essence, it will be a sidewalk to nowhere in perpetuity. There, there's not, there's not undeveloped land that it ties into that would at some point in the future be developed and include a sidewalk. So that's what makes this a little more unique than some of the other situations where we have sidewalk that, that, that ends on each end.
So it sounds like, Mr. Owen, that the common sense approach would say, let's go ahead and get some plans that don't have sidewalks on them. Approve those plans that don't have sidewalks on them, accept money now for our sidewalk fund so we have a head start, so we can actually start repairing sidewalks currently with that money. And then he'll be all set and ready to go. So whenever he has time to actually build, then we don't have to worry about coming back before us or anything like that, or paying stuff then, or anything. Everything's already taken care of upfront.
But he has to be on board with paying that, that amount?
Yeah, if you wanted to do it.
Let me add one other caveat. This is not a requirement that you must pay the 75% to get a waiver. It gives flexibility to the boards to discuss the matter with the developer. You can grant the waiver of sidewalks with no remission of any money. So you can grant the waiver straight out, you can grant the waiver in lieu of a 75%, or you can deny the waiver and require the sidewalks.
Maybe it'd be a good idea to come up with a common sense approach to grant waivers when, such as when there are three or four houses or fewer... Maybe it'd be a good idea to come up with a common sense approach to grant waivers when, such as when there are three or four houses, or fewer, or something like that. I'm just saying, as an example.
We're, we're working on a sidewalk, the-
Just something that makes-
Sidewalks are very, sidewalks are very difficult.
Yeah.
And we're working on a revision to the sidewalk portion of the subdivision regulations now to hopefully do just that, but that, that is, sidewalks are a very detailed discussion to, to have.
You know, operating off common sense is a good idea, and I think, you know, we could come up with something that would work for everybody.
And with this being a relatively new development, as far as having the, the sidewalk fund in place and available as an option, there's nothing that says, as Mr. Collins said, that, that you could take the proposed five-foot sidewalk off the plat, put a note that says, these four lots have been granted a waiver in conjunction with the city sidewalk fund. At the time, building permits are pulled, you know, payment in the amount of seventy-five percent, or payment in the amount in accordance with the approved sidewalk funding would be required. And that way, it's on the plat, and it's applicable to all four lots, and then that way, you don't have that, if that's the scenario that scares you, you know, that, that's something that could certainly occur.
Given, given I'm kind of caught on this, right in the middle of you guys all trying to get that part of it sorted, sorted out. So the plat now shows a sidewalk, correct?
Correct.
On it? You guys would be, would you be willing to give me the final without, and waive the sidewalk and the fee? Rather than me go, be back here in thirty days and engineering fees, and we're just here? If that's an option, I mean, you say it's an option to do that.
And you guys may have all captured this, but so developer, like he may sell these lots, the builder would pay for those sidewalks. So essentially, if he pays the seventy-five hundred dollars right now, it's an additional seventy-five hundred dollars to him that a builder would have covered in the future when they built the individual lots.
Or he could add it to the price of the lot.
That's right. No, you could pay it and increase the price of the lot, or, you know?
But that could be way down the road, I mean-
I like the city engineer's suggestion, granting a waiver with, you know, however, when the permits pulled, the builder's going to have to pay that seventy-five percent of that engineered cost in, so it's not on the developer. We don't lose out on those funds. I, I think that makes more sense. Let, let that go to the builder who's going to build it.
Would that just flag when a surveyor pulled a plot plan from the plat or something?
Yeah, so, so we're, we're protected in that it's on a publicly recorded document, so if an individual who purchases one of these lots says, well, I didn't know it's going to cost, I mean, it, it was on the recorded plat as a note that was applicable to this lot, so.
And, and in theory, it's, it's cheaper to pay into this fund, because he's only paying seventy-five percent of what that cost normally would be.
I think that it may be an inflated cost for, yeah, I think you probably do sidewalks cheaper. Is that a motion?
That's a motion.
So we have a motion to approve, subject to removing the sidewalks, adding a note on the plat that the individual builder, when the permits pulled, will pay the seventy-five percent of the sidewalk fund at the rate, current rate. Is that correct?
Right.
Well, is it a current rate, or is it the rate at that time? Because it could change over time, and Mr. Caldwell said he doesn't know when this is going to happen, so I think we should just, at the current rate, would be my motion.
At the time.
Just in accordance with this, whatever the city's current sidewalk fund policy is at the time-
Yes.
The building permit is pulled.
Because if it's ten years down the road, those prices, I assume, would have gone up by that point, so.
And so what we'll do, if it's okay with you guys, I'll work with Scott and Micah to develop what that note needs to actually say, so you're not trying to fabricate it yourselves, and, and then we'll get that sent over to you. So, so then we're looking for the, the sidewalk to be taken off the plat, this note to be added, and then, subject to those things being done, there would be no more action needed before this body-
That's good.
To get the plat recorded. Sir?
Now that's put up a letter, create another bond, is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct.
Mr. Caldwell?
I'm sorry.
Yes, sir. Mr. Caldwell, are you okay with agreeing to pay a seventy-five percent fee of-
He's not paying it, though.
No, 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 hold on. A seventy-five percent fee of something in the future yet to be, I mean, no, the builder, whoever the builder is, you're essentially at this point in time agreeing that that builder, whenever they purchase the property to build upon it, would pay some fee that is yet to be determined. Because that future fee might be different than the fee that you would pay today in 2019. Does that make sense?
Could, could we set this up?
It's an industry rate, it's an industry fee, it's an industry standard amount, so.
At that point in time?
Yeah.
So even though it changes, you can still agree to that, and you'd be okay with that?
But they would be paying, they would be installing sidewalks at that rate.
I'm just making sure. I just, I don't like that idea.
We have a motion from Burks, we have a second from Quals, everyone understand the motion? Any additional discussion? Are you okay with this, staff? Do I all sound good?
Oh, yes, sir.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Much carries. Thank you, Mr. Caldwell.
Thank you.
And let me also say, thank you, that was how this was intended to work.
Excellent.
So thank you very much.
Item two, new business, PC 2019-01, a resolution to adopt revised subdivision regulations for the city of Fairview, Tennessee. Mr. Collins or Mr. Sullivan?
Yes, sir. One, one item for you, for consideration as you, as you read into this. On your agenda, the first two items here, you have items number two, which is Resolution 1901, and number three, which is Resolution 1902. Those subdivision regulations will require, according to Mr. Owen, and I believe this to be true, a public hearing on those subdivision regulations. So these will be for discussion for you tonight. You'll be, there'll be no action for you to take on those two items other than discuss what they are. On items four through seven, those are, those are recommendations for changes to the zoning ordinance, and the zoning ordinance has to be changed by the Board of Commissioners. So for items four through seven, you could either adopt a resolution tonight and send that forward, and it would have to go through the first, second reading at the VOC level, or we could just simply go down and explain which each one of these are, and take them up for, for consideration of action on another day. But we have been working on our subdivision regulations and our zoning ordinance, and you, we discussed that we're going to, to do some of that, and this is the first stage of that. So there's no requirement that you take any action on any of these tonight, but we would like to explain them to you so you understand what, what they are. So, Mr. Owen, does that sound reasonably accurate? So with that, I will turn this over to Mr. Sullivan, and we'll just kind of go down these in order and make, let you understand what those are. Micah?
Item two, which is our first resolution, PC 2019-01. I'm not going to read the full thing that's there in front of you. What this is, for developments in our subdivision regulations, we are being told from the, the postal service that they are requiring the cluster mailbox units. That is a requirement from the postal service, not from the city, but we are being told what is to be done. With this, that is saying that anytime that that is required in a subdivision, these will be the requirements that go along with that. The, the first general is just saying what they are, also saying that it will not be owned by the city and cannot be given, sold, acquired by the city, goes into the design standards. USPS has very specific standards on these, but these go a little bit above and beyond for the, the style and appearance of it on the city's side. Keeps a roof over it, concrete pad below it, adequate lighting, and then making sure it's aesthetically pleasing. Next down is parking for that, and again, USPS standards require ADA accessibility. So that is not specifically mentioned for parking, but that it goes along with that. That way, we don't have to change our regulations when they change theirs on certain issues, that we let their regulations be theirs, and we just go above and beyond that. So that is the, the 2019-01 for that mail delivery and those, those boxes. Any questions on the first one?
Yes. It doesn't, I might be missing it, but where does it say the minimum number of homes in a subdivision this applies to, or is there a minimum?
That is specifically up to USPS. Again, we're not requiring the boxes, the cluster boxes, they're requiring them, so they set the requirement when they're required, what's required with them. We're just saying, when it's required, this is what it has to meet on the city's side.
Sure.
So we, we don't set that rate.
So we don't know what they're, they haven't, they haven't really enacted this yet.
It is enacted, but I don't know specifically what their numbers are. They've kind of pushed it in larger subdivisions, larger cities, and have been getting now to some of the smaller cities outside of the Nashville area. Was told specifically one of our subdivisions would be soon to be looked at, and that's why we want to go ahead and get this, is we know that we're going to be in the view next. So we want to make sure that we are ready for when that does come, what the standards will be for that.
Is it retroactive, or is it only new?
From what I am being told, it is anything that is new.
I have one question.
Yes, sir.
Maybe more, but the, if they're enacting this, and we're putting this out the way where you have this stated, have they identified any penalties for, and who that penalty would be imposed on? Would it be the city, or would it be the developer, or would it be the homeowners?
That I do not know.
If the thing is fully developed before they come after it, and it hadn't been done?
That would be between the postal service, developer, and homeowner. I don't know who would be the one that would be caught on the block on that one. But I just know that they're coming to us, getting our assistance, and getting it taken care of.
Well, Mike, I, I know right now that this is, is new to you. What would you do when, when somebody showed up? Would you just refer them to go to the post office or contact?
Yes, sir.
I mean, it's kind of out of your hands, and you just say, you need to get, for instance, it would be the same if you wanted to get access to Highway 100. You would have to go to the proper authorities-
Correct.
Get that plan approved.
We're, we're being told that going forward, it's going to be required. So on our plan review stage, it will have to be shown what it is, or where it's going to be, based on USPS regulations. So it's not us requiring it, it's them requiring it, such as T-Dot giving the access. It's them requiring it, but just us making sure that that is there and met, met on our side to their side.
I guess what my question is, because there's going to be a building built there, of course, the building would have to be built to codes.
Yes, sir.
But also, the post office may have other codes or other standards that the city didn't have.
Correct.
I mean, if you wanted to build a, a building out here, there, and you just wanted it to be a building, there's a certain minimum codes that you would require. But with the postal service, that would be different, and would they go to the postal service to make sure they?
This is in regards to subdivisions? So it wouldn't be just a building, it would be a development going through the development stage?
Right, but what I'm saying is, the developer would work with the postal service to make sure that the building to house these cluster mailboxes met their approval.
Yes, sir.
Is that, is that correct?
Yes, sir. When they presented their documents, their engineered drawings or documents that they present, it would have to include the USPS-approved postal station within those documents. And they would have to stamp certify that, that what they present does meet those standards.
Is sign off of this part of building, the building inspector, or any inspectors to get the UNO or CO?
Ask the question one more time, I'm sorry.
This cluster mailbox and the, the structure that goes around it, is it part of the sign offs for building, to get inspections, to get UNOs, things like that? Does the city of Fairview building inspector have to sign off on it?
When, when we go out and do that work, we would ensure that it was constructed to the design standards, it was presented in those, in those, in those documents. If not, then we would go back and address that by bond or some other, some other method. Part of the dilemma that you run into this is, it's not going to be a part of any city-owned infrastructure. So as this goes, the, the post office cluster, or the parking related to it, will not be a part of the bonding for the city-owned infrastructure, such as streets, sidewalks, that sort of thing. So we would, as a part of this review, make sure that it does meet the postal service standards, and we have added some additional standards within this document that requires it to be covered, requires it to be lit, those sorts of things. So we would follow up and make sure that it meets those standards to go forward. If not, then I assume we wouldn't accept the subdivision until such time as it's constructed properly.
Gotcha.
So it's that the United States Postal Service, their standards, and back to Mr. Anderson's question, the penalty would be, if you don't build this the way we want you to build it, we will not deliver mail to you.
Right. I didn't know if it-
You come to the post office to pick your mail up, and so when the homeowners aren't getting their mail, we don't want to be responsible for that.
Sure. I didn't know if, if the, if the postal service was going to come after, like, if they were going to come out and inspect it, or if it was going to fall on the city to come out and inspect it and make sure it's built correctly.
They inspect their structure. So the box itself is a approved, there's a list of different boxes that are approved.
Right.
And with those- The way that it's, but then they will come out and look at it, they will see that it is done to their standards for the box itself.
Sure.
Anything above that would be, would be ours to inspect.
So you would inspect framing and things like that. They're inspecting to ensure the boxes are the right size, the right material, and-
And ADA compliance.
That's them, yes.
I guess, because I know some apartment complexes, they've just got boxes on post, and there's a whole line of boxes. And certainly that would, may or may not meet the standards, because it is cluster mailboxes. But what you're saying is, it'll be that, plus the city is also saying that we want the roof on it, the lights, or is that the post office that wants the roof and the lights?
That's us. We, we're, our, our requirement specifically, paragraph two, fourteen dash sixteen point two, design standards, states each centralized mail location shall be minimally built to the current USPS specifications, and shall be built with a concrete or asphalt pad and covered roof over an extending three foot, over and extending three feet on all sides of the cluster box unit. Adequate lighting shall be approved at each unit at an average illuminated intensity of point five foot candle. The aesthetic and protective nature of the centralized mail delivery facility shall be considered an integral element of the overall design and shall be reviewed as a part of the design review process. Meaning, the first standard is the United States Postal Service standard. Once that's met, the second standard would be the lighting, the coverage, and the accessibility.
So the, the design standards is the city, and the previous, I mean, above it, the general is the post office. Is that kind of what you're?
Yes, sir.
Okay, okay.
We, we want it to have a nice appearance and be serviceable, over and above what the postal service would, because ultimately, it's in one of our subdivisions, we want it to meet that standard.
I know that there's one they're already talking about, the one, it's already been up here-
On Cox Pike?
On Cox Pike, that they are talking about that, and when we was talking about it, there were some questions as to what was going to be required. I don't think that we had all the answers for him that day.
You are correct, sir.
And, and I assume what they're doing is, they're going to purchase this unit, it's got all the boxes already pre-done, they're not building it, they're just going to buy it and install the whole unit somewhere. Whatever they do, it's going to meet the post office standards, plus our standards, so it's not a lot to inspect. It, it should come correct, as far as the actual units. It's just a matter of the installation, really.
Yes, sir.
Who maintains that unit once, like, years down the road it goes to, you know, gets blown up, or tornado, or whatever, you know?
Mr. Caldwell, the best answer I can give you is not the city of Fairview.
That's the best answer, but it's, it's going to be a big, you know, somewhere down the road, it's going to rust out or something.
Yeah, it's, it's a dilemma question, and if you're in a subdivision, let, let's assume that we're talking about, and I'll use the example that, that we discussed in the office. Let's assume that, that you own ten acres, and you bring something to the, to the city where you want to do ten half-acre lots, and you get it approved for R20. Well, you have ten half-acre lots approved by the city, R20, but the postal service requires that you have twenty, a cluster box of twenty. Then the question becomes, who owns that, who maintains that?
Right.
Our answer is, we don't have an answer. Unfortunately, that would be between the builder or the developer and the postal service, and I don't know that they have an answer for that.
Yeah, and they might not for 10 or 15 years, I mean, when something happens.
They may not, so, and then where would you put it?
Yeah.
Because if I have 10 acres and I have 20 half-acre lots, and I don't have a space.
No.
For that thing, so it's, it's, it's a complicated issue. Our, our effort in this was to kind of middle of the road this thing. So we make sure that we hold the USPS standard within our regulations, but don't overstate that standard to put a liability on the Fairview taxpayer.
Right.
And that, that's a difficult balance, I mean, very much so.
Any additional questions on 1901?
I guess my general question is, if citizens of Fairview don't like what the USPS is currently trying to do here, how can they voice their complaints to the USPS to try to change this?
I would advise them to contact the postmaster.
Yeah, because ultimately, the tax, USPS is funded by taxpayers, correct? So we are the stakeholders and the funders, right?
I don't-
I just don't like the feeling of having hands tied here. Like, we're being forced to do something that affects everybody, but no one has a say in. And that sounds like BS to me.
Might take a nap with Congress, because it's the United States Postal Service, which is next to the railroad.
Actually, they already do that to a certain extent. You've got a mailbox in front of your house, you have to have it a certain height, certain distance away from the road.
Yeah.
All they're saying is, is that we're doing away from them, and we're putting them all in a central location. And if you didn't want to have a mailbox in front of your house, you could go down and pay for a box at the post office, and go get your mail down there, and that's what they would tell you.
Which is essentially what they're doing right now.
Okay.
Yeah.
Any additional on 201901? No action needed, so we'll go to item, new business, number item number three, 201902.
Going with 201902, this clarifies a little bit for the fire department. One thing we've been regulating is, out of the fire code, the recommended feet distance is 500 feet per fire hydrants. Our regulation showed 1,000, so we are going down to that 500 feet, which is something that we've been requesting and showing code on. So it's been, being met, but just getting our, our codes correct. Also adding to that, though, is, there we go, the bottom line on the first page, flipping over, without crossing any existing street, road, or highway or structures, whichever is, yeah, whichever is applicable. What that is, a subdivision that goes in off of State Route 100 or 96, if there's a hydrant across that highway, it may be within the 500 feet. But then you're crossing a state route just to get access to a hydrant. So we are requiring that that be same side of the, the road, and actually accessible, not just a 500-foot circle. So that's what those two changes are. It's just going from the 1,000 feet down to the 500, and putting it where it is available to get to from the new developments. Any questions on that?
Mike, the intent there is just not having to cross existing streets, right?
Correct.
So new subdivisions with new roadways would not be required to have a fire hydrant on each side of the road?
That is correct.
Okay.
It's, yeah, existing street, road, or highway, or structures. And again, that's just to take care of that existing.
And there's a small caveat to that. It's generally been, it's said 1,000 feet, but we don't have 1,000 feet of hose on fire truck. So if we're 1,000 feet between hydrants, we don't have 1,000 feet of hose on a fire truck, then we're at the absolute limit for where we can do. So reducing that from 1,000 to 500 gives us ability to duplicate services with the existing equipment that we have on a fire trucks, as a standard.
Any questions or discussion? So no action needed, item four, new business. Recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to adopt revised zoning articles for the City of Fairview, Tennessee by Resolution PC 201903.
Resolution PC 2019-03, this shows that what we're removing is basically the bottom part of the paragraph for that purpose. There are some iffy words in there, getting from the multifamily, where it's condo or cooperative owned, and then showing to go to the provisions for the PUDs, or POD as we now have. And we're taking that out and making it where a multifamily, it shows that it's intended for design criteria for multifamily dwellings when located with two or more buildings on a zone lot. Clearing it up, getting it where our regulations aren't as questionable on what is a condominium, what is cooperative owned, and being what multifamily is specifically. Any questions on O3?
So we will make a motion on this one for a recommendation to the board, correct?
Yes, sir, if that's your preference, you certainly can.
Okay, so this one will go to the board for their, for their approval or disapproval, and we can send them a recommendation.
Second.
Anderson first, Burke second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Move to item five, Recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to adopt revised zoning articles for the City of Fairview, Tennessee, Resolution PC 201904.
Similar to the discussion we had about subdivisions and the cluster mailboxes, this is just covering some of the cluster mailboxes in multifamily. It was lacking, to say the least, and we added that there should be the same cover over that roof and ground, and then the parking space is dedicated to those units. And again, aesthetic and protective nature would have to be reviewed.
Make a motion for a positive recommendation. Second.
But one, one question on that.
Yes, sir, yep, open discussion.
On the first one about cluster mailboxes, it says that they, that the parking increases at the rate of one space per 50 dwelling units. And on this one, it says that the parking increases at one space per 20 dwelling units. So what's the difference in one and the other?
One of the differences is multifamily, how the parking will be set up already, as well as usually they're going to be closer to the other parking. But with, with your single family, usually you're going to be getting in, maybe walking down, not going to have as much of a central area. So that was just kind of trying to figure out what would be the, the good rate for that, getting more of that central area for the multifamily.
I, I guess to me, it sounds backwards. Because a lot of times that the multifamilies, if it was apartment complex, or something similar to that, or condos, it's going to be more of a walking situation than if you've got houses that the people are farther away from the central mailbox. And so to me, it would seem like you would need more for the development where the houses are spread out, as to whether they're compacted, or, or closer in nation, in, in nature. So I mean, we've already, if I lived in, in a subdivision, and I lived a half a mile from the mailboxes, then I'm more likely, well, I probably need to walk up there, but I would be more likely to stop and get my mail, as if I lived in an apartment complex, and I parked on the street, and I could just walk over there. So it seems to me more like that the subdivision would need more parking places than apartments, but what I'm seeing is opposite of that. Does that make sense, or, I mean?
Whenever I put it together, I had a really good reason behind it. Totally lost on that reason right now.
I do that all the time, but I was just asking the question.
That makes sense.
The first item, 1901, was a revision of the subdivision regulations that were related to-
I suppose it could be amended if it-
Cluster boxes, multi-family, and that's a part of the subreg. This one is a part of the- Would it make sense to remove this from the zoning ordinance? Got it. Forgot to say anything, please.
Just, may I throw out one more thing?
Yes, sir.
To be noted, apartment complexes are going to have common ground that's going to be maintained through the Apartment Association. And so therefore, putting a kiosk on an apartment complex does not create a owner's question or a maintenance question. Individual subdivision with no homeowners association creates a maintenance and owner's question on the kiosk that's being forced on the, the community by the federal government. And I just think that ought to be noted.
The, the multifamily, and yell at me if I say anything wrong, but it's also going to probably have a clubhouse, based off the size, that the, the mailboxes are typically going to be close to those clubhouses. The clubhouses, I forget what the, what the regulation is for the parking there, but you're probably going to usually have more parking around that general area where that, the mailboxes are going to be, and also the clubhouse.
That, that would be one, but have a homeowner association.
That would be a multifamily, like an apartment complex.
Yeah.
But that still goes back, if you're going to have the parking there anyway, then why do you make parking, more parking? Because on apartments, every 20 over.
Yeah.
It's one parking place. On the subdivision, whatever the, the set amount is, after you get over forever 50, you get an extra parking place. And I know the first one we didn't vote on, and it's going to go to the Board of Commissioners.
We'll have a hearing, and we'll talk about that one again. So let's visit that residential.
We can, we can clean this up and try and get you an answer. The first one will not go to the Board of Commissioners, this one does go to the Board of Commissioners.
So we'll get to talk about it, that's a good.
So we can, we can just simply hold off on this for a month, try and get you a better answer, and that is going to go to the BOC anyway.
Michael will think about what he did it for. But his thinking was when he did it.
Yes, sir.
Are we okay with 1 in 20 on this one? Because we are going to vote on this one.
The 1 in 20 makes sense to me, the 1 in 50 doesn't, I guess.
Okay, and we do have a, a motion and a second on the table.
And one thing I'll note, I've never lived in an apartment complex that could not use more parking spaces. So 1 in 20 is better for apartments, just my thought.
One thing you might consider tweaking just a little bit is, if the, if the parking for the mail delivery, it'd be in addition to the required minimum parking for the actual complex itself. Because I could see a scenario where a developer comes in and says, well, I've got parking right here beside it, but technically, that was his minimum parking for the unit itself, the residential unit, and not the mailbox. Something to think about.
It, it states, "Two dedicated parking spaces shall be provided with easy access to each centralized mail unit." So we could word that however.
That's good. Any additional discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, move to item six, Recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to adopt revised zoning articles for the City of Fairview, Tennessee by Resolution PC 201905.
201905, currently for our commercial general, as well as commercial mixed-use, we allow multifamily. That, that zoning allows multifamily under the supplemental provisions. And as staff, we would like to remove those provisions for those two zoning districts, and not have residential in a commercial, those two commercial zoning districts at all. And this, this resolution takes both of those out of, again, the commercial general and the commercial mixed-use, removing multifamily dwellings completely.
Thank you, sir. Any questions? I think this would be more for new, new developments in a commercial zoning with proposed multifamily apartments and things like that.
So would this restrict something like West Haven, where they have?
No, no, sir, because we'll still have those zoning districts.
Okay.
And that would be a PUD or a POD.
So it would be under a POD, and?
Yes, sir, once you do that planned development, it changes, it changes everything. And there is still a provision for that in, in there as well.
We had someone recently that came before us, had a, I guess it was more of a fact finding, I can't remember if it was before this board or it was before the BOC, probably here.
Mr. Caldwell, where the condominium.
Yes. This would affect that, what he was suggesting, because that was commercial general, I believe. So if we pass this, if someone could, as a courtesy, just give him a call and let him know, hey, I know you were thinking about that, but just FYI. And I know it's not been proposed, but he did ask for our feedback, so.
Yes, sir, we, I talk to him about every three days.
Okay, well, when you talk to him tomorrow, let him know.
He's pretty interested in, in this, in this one.
Do we have a motion?
Motion for a positive recommendation.
Second.
Burke's first, Power's second, any additional discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, item seven, Recommendation to the Board of Commissioners to adopt revised zoning articles for the City of Fairview, Tennessee by Resolution PC 201906.
I'm tired of talking. PC 201906, this is in RS40 zone, that's our single-family residential, 40,000 square foot. As you may remember, I believe it came before this board recently, it may have been Board of Zoning Appeals, there was a question about the, the lot width in the city versus the same-sized lots in the county. That kind of sparked us looking into what the requirements are. And we are looking into going from a 150 width building envelope to 125 foot. And again, that is measured at the building line. That gets down to closer to what the county is. And that way, if you have one acre lots right across from each other, you're, you're playing in the same ball field. Also, 125 feet's still a very good width, and it's higher than our R-20, which I believe is 100 feet.
And we've granted some variances on this issue in the past, have we not? Through the Board of Zoning Appeals, I think Mr. Mangrum's on Taylor Road.
We, we did not, the Board of Zoning Appeals did not pass that.
Did not.
No.
He was asked to come back and rezone.
Yeah, to go to R-20.
For that thing.
Would this capture, though, is he 125, would that capture? So if we did this, that lot would now be conforming RS40 lot.
Okay.
Any discussion or questions?
Have there been any other requests by anyone else, something along this line?
Not specifically formal requests. Several interested parties are always asking, okay, is my lot width? And we have some crazy lots here in Fairview. I don't know if y'all ever look at the, the GIS maps. I don't know if y'all ever look at the GIS maps. We have some lots that look like this, and this, and this. Sometimes if you have good road frontage, by the time you get to your building setback, you don't have what you need. And there have been several people who haven't specifically requested it in a formal setting, but have been angry with us about what that would be.
I'd make a motion for a positive recommendation.
First, Burks. Anderson, second. Any additional discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? She carries. Do we have the sidewalk thing tonight? We got the resolution copy, but I don't see it on.
That'll be in the discussion with city manager.
Okay. All right, we'll go to bonds and letters of credit. Willow Crest subdivision performance bond expires May 15, 2019.
I spoke with her today. She did send over, similar to the bond last month, that was the continuation. She did send that again today for this performance bond being continuation as well, so it is good for the next year.
So it's good to go, no action needed?
Correct.
Thank you, sir. Item two, Deer Valley Downs, letter of credit expires May 19, 2019.
I got email today saying that we would have that either today or the next day or two. I did not see if it came in today, but spoke with them today saying that it should be here between now and the end of this week.
And that's the one we just got an email this week about street trees and stuff still not in. I guess they're right, and they're working on it.
Yes, sir.
I'd make a motion to call the letter of credit if it's not, if we're not provided renewed documentation by May 19 of 2019.
Second.
Burks first, Blade second. Any additional discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item three, Sweet Rider Springs, phase two, letter of credit expires May 25, 2019.
Similarly, on this one, I was told that it was in my email, and I have not been able to check that this afternoon to see. But I was told that that has been renewed and is, is ready for the 2019-2020 year.
Thank you, sir.
But we don't, but you haven't confirmed it yet?
I have not confirmed it.
Then I make a motion to call the letter of credit if it's not, if the documentation of the renewal is not provided by May 25 of 2019.
Second.
Burks first, Blade second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. We will now go to, sir.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'd like to make a motion to add the Fairview Station sidewalk issue for Mr. Gordon to the agenda at this point.
So we have a motion to amend the approved agenda to add a new business item. We have a second. Any additional discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
So we, we'll jump back to new business, and we will have Fairview Station. The discussion is, based off Mr. Huntley's feedback and our citizens' comments, his request to go to the maintenance bond that was proposed. I don't have a date of the meeting of the 83,000. And in lieu of the sidewalk, a $15,000 towards the sidewalk fund. And that's all my notes I have right now. I don't know if the staff has anything to add on this, or any recommendations, or... Mr. Owen, do you have that maintenance number?
Yes, I was just looking.
It's a January 14th email.
Does anyone have any questions or additional discussion? This came up to us, I guess, in the February PC meeting, and we denied the maintenance bond and requested the wider sidewalks. And so that's what has brought it back here.
Mr. Owen, for clarity, do the current sidewalks as installed meet ADA requirements?
Yes.
Okay.
That's correct. Mr. Collins, right?
Yes, that is correct. Yes, sir.
Now, this was, this is submitted as a PUD, correct? Fairview Station?
I believe that's correct.
Okay. So as, as part of a PUD, the developer brought to the board of commissioners at some point saying, hey, I want to make, you know, smaller lots versus what we normally would be allowed to do. In exchange, we'll do this, 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 and this for you. And that's what was voted on and approved by the board of commissioners. That was a deal that was made. And my understanding, what the developer's asking now is, hey, we didn't hold up our end of the bargain, because we said we were going to do five-foot sidewalks. We only did four, we didn't catch it. Whether it's your fault, builder's fault, I don't know. It just wasn't done. But now he says, well, I want to go back on my deal that I made with you. In exchange of doing that one foot of concrete, which this body's already said, no, we don't want to add on one foot. We want you to do a total of five feet in width. He wants to pay 75% of one foot. To me, that's not really acceptable. I mean, you came to us for a deal. We said, okay, we'll let you do this thing, make these smaller lots than we would normally require, if you do what you're supposed to do. My next question would be, or my question for Mr. Owen, is would it be really 75% of that one foot width? Or is it 75% of that five foot that he should pay in? Because in essence, that's what it was supposed to be. So which one should we, if we're even going to consider it, which should we really be considering?
Yeah, I mean, that would be completely up to you on which formula you wanted to use in consideration of that 75%.
Because what was required is a sidewalk of five feet. He's already requested once just to add that one foot on, which I think the discussion was that wasn't really feasible, because that's going to fall away, there's going to be issues with that, so.
Mr. Gordon, do you have a comment?
Yes, sir. Thank you. The $17,100 was 125% of the cost there. If you use that formula, 100% of the cost is $13,680. And if you go to a 75% formula, you're looking at $12,825. We're not, we're proposing a $15,000 contribution to the sidewalk fund, which exceeds 100% of the cost.
Of adding one foot?
Correct.
Not of adding in a five-foot sidewalk that was required?
Correct, because the four is already there.
What would be 75% of the total cost of a five-foot sidewalk replacement?
I don't have those figures in front of me, I'm sorry.
That number. I just had it, hang on. Well, and that, and that same referenced email said if the PC's desire, if the PC and BOC desire is to replace the existing sidewalk or require replacement of the existing sidewalk in whole, then I recommended keeping the existing bond amount of 65,000 in place.
Couldn't you, whatever number he had, couldn't you multiply it by five and come up with what one foot was as opposed to five foot? I mean, if it was.
That's, I believe, how we came to the 17,000, $17,100 is 125%, I believe, of the one-foot cost.
But what I'm saying is, Mr. Burks' question was, is what would be five feet, not the one foot? Is that, I think, so if that's it, it's not a whole lot of math. If it was 17,000 times five, you know, that's.
But that'd be at 125%. And it's a little late for me to be doing math, Mr. Powers.
For round figures, I believe the answer you're talking about is $45,000.
Okay.
If we're working off a $60,000, $60,000 total construction sidewalk, 75% would be $45,000. So I think you're talking about $45,000 for the installation of five feet for the perimeter of the property versus 17,000 for one foot for the perimeter of the property. Round figures would be how the math would work if that comes, comes there. So I think, if that answers the question, it will be, $45,000 will be 75% of the construction cost on a five-foot sidewalk, which I think is the question. Versus 75% of the cost for one-foot sidewalk for the perimeter.
And, but even 75% of the five foot.
We said like 13,000 was, was 100%. 75% was a little bit less. The 17 grand was 125%. So if you're taking 13 times five, that's around 65,000, whatever.
But what I'm saying is, 75% of that number is still less than if he had to tell the cost of demolition of the existing sidewalk and to put the five foot back in there. So if he paid 75% of what should have been the whole five foot, then he's still money ahead, as if we said, we're not going to give you a waiver. We want it tore up, we want five foot there.
Understood. Yes, sir, you're correct.
I got one question. Did you build all the units?
A1 home builders did.
Okay. So as our process goes, as an individual builds a home there, we inspect each home individually and at that time determine that his sidewalk meets and complies to what the subdivision's going to be. So technically, if we had five different builders in there, and they're the ones that built the four foot instead of the five foot, they would be liable, because we've been inspecting those individuals for compliance, not the developer.
I do not believe that we're inspecting a sidewalk per individual CEO basis. The sidewalk is captured at, when they asked for release of their bond, that's when it was captured. So ultimately, the developer's holding the bond for the sidewalks. The developer is responsible for the installation of the sidewalks as approved on the plat.
That's correct.
Infrastructure would be developer, building inspection or building codes would be the drip line of the, of the structure, effectively.
Yeah, I guess what I'm trying to say is, I agree with all of that, but I mean, he should have some recourse to the individual builders who did not comply.
May have, I don't know. From, from a, from a city standpoint, absent of any dollar value, I'll tell you what, what our concern has been from an infrastructure standpoint as you go forward, if you, and I'm not, this is absent of what would have been done or should have been done or any dollar value, but from the sheer application of sidewalk as it exists going forward in the subdivision. Part of the concern that I have on the city side, because we will be responsible for these sidewalks for forever, and forever's a long time, there are certain sections where the sidewalk, the sidewalk is a part of your driveway, or your driveway is a part of the sidewalk, and that part is required to meet ADA. There are going to be some issues if, if the sidewalk is widened, not that it couldn't have been prevented before, but that it could be a problem now, that if we widen the sidewalks from four feet to five feet, that's going to make the incline on some of the driveways at the access point and the incline itself inaccessible by vehicle to a large extent. You're cutting into that driveway by one foot in one direction or the other. So there are some residences in the subdivision where the driveway goes up, and it's going to be difficult, if not impossible, to drive some vehicles over the hump, across the driveway, and back up the hill again, simply because of the slope. On the other side of the neighborhood, there are issues where the four-foot wide sidewalk, you have to drive over the sidewalk and down a driveway rather than up a driveway, which is going to increase the slope of the driveway on the other side and likely cause a reconstruction of the driveway on one side of the sidewalk. So if, from a, from a strictly infrastructure management standpoint, an opportunity not to widen them from four to five benefits the city long-term, as far as the ownership of the asset itself. Within that, it's clearly this board's purview to do what they, what they choose to do, regardless of waiver, dollar, reinstallation. But I can tell you, from the city ownership of the sidewalk, a widened sidewalk is going to present some infrastructure concerns as far as the ownership and management of those long-term.
Well.
And they've got water meters and underground transformers up against these sidewalks. It's a mess.
But isn't that really the builder's problem, to come back and fix those issues?
Mr. Burks, I'm not saying it would or would not be. I, I just know that.
I'm asking that.
Mr. Collins? It's not really the developer's issue. It seems like he should be going to the builder saying, hey, you didn't do this right. If this has to be fixed, that cost should be on you individual builders. If they have to move utilities, move utilities.
Mr. Potter, how is it perceived if they, they do extend to five foot and the driveway is unusable, then they'll have to encroach into private property to, to remove and repair a driveway? Is that a possibility? Or you have to get consent, I guess, to just, just talking it out?
Sure, it's a possibility, but they're going to have to compensate.
Yeah.
Just seems like the easiest thing is to leave it at four feet and take the money and put it into the fund to fix those sidewalks that might go south and down the road. I mean, that, that just sounds like the, since the sidewalks are already in, right? They're all proper now, right? The sidewalks are proper.
From the ease of operation, yes, sir. I know that's not satisfactory. I know, I know this body, nor the BOC, nor the staff wants to set the precedent of accepting something that was, was to be constructed in one way, not constructed in that way, and effectively taking compensation for the lack of performance on the developer. I don't think that's a precedent that anyone wants to set. In this circumstance, unfortunately, I believe it may be the most reasonable for all parties involved. Ultimately, the end user will be the resident. It's just the discussion.
I guess my thing is, we've got tonight on our citizens' comments, we had two developers that came to us with inadequate, because they did not build to the plans.
Yes, sir.
And then they come to us after. I've worked for developers. I've been in charge, I've been superintendent on these jobs. I check my contractors, I make sure they're doing the job right. I do not have this problem at the end. I do not have to go ask for a waiver, because it was done right to begin with. So when the contractors I work for didn't let me off the hook if I didn't follow up. And what we've got now is too, that the developers did not follow up with their builders or whatever. And they come to us to make an exception for something they should have done. And they should have had control of the site. They should have made sure it was built. Not the, not us, not you, not the city. They're the ones that failed the city when we approved a plan for a PUD or whatever, or approved a plan for a road. Like Mr. Burks said, they didn't do what they told us they would do when we approved the plan. And I do have an issue with that.
Yes, sir.
And, and going forward, I would not like this to be a precedent, that this is what happens every time a developer finds out his builder did not do what he was supposed to. I think the developer needs to be on top of their builders, more than just, I'll go out there and build the houses, and then we'll go to board of commissioners or somebody and get a waiver. And I, I mean, I'm not.
No, I understand you completely. Yes, sir.
And I, I don't know, really, I mean, if it was up to me, I would tell him to pull them out and build them, or to pay the 75% on the whole five foot is what, in my heart, that's what I think should be done. If they're going to pay a waiver, it should be on what they didn't get done, as opposed to one foot that they left off.
Understood.
So I don't know where this board or what they feel, but if somebody that's been in that position, I know what I had to do to do my job correctly. And what I think is, the developers are not following up and not doing their job correctly. And then they come in and say, oh, please help us. And that's a bad feeling when we, when that has to be something that's done.
Yes, I understood it.
I agree with that, except ripping out the sidewalks might not be the best thing, but increasing the amount of money might be the way to get around that, you know? Yeah.
Somebody can try and do it again.
Yeah, right.
Because when we do this tonight, we're setting the precedent. I, I know their life is not, I mean, for developers, I know it's not always an easy job to keep up with this, but it also shouldn't fall on the city to, to have to make up for their inadequacies in not following up.
Right. But it needed to be, needed to be addressed earlier, because now with the four-foot sidewalks, everything else is built around the four-foot sidewalk. So we almost need the extra money for down the road, because he's saying if we pull out the four-foot sidewalks, you've got all kinds of other stuff that's not going to be rejiggered.
And I understand that. I understand that we may be going to leave the four-foot sidewalks, but what I'm saying is, the amount paying the fund shouldn't be on the one foot, it should be on the entire five foot.
Exactly.
So we need to agree on an amount. That's, that's what I'm getting, so we need to come up with an amount and agree on an amount.
Mr. Gordon, you have something to say?
I received a text just a moment ago about this issue, and the developers agreed to the hundred and twenty-five percent, if that would help discussions.
Does that go, like you're saying, like seventeen or so?
Seventeen-one. And he wants to assure the board, he's not here asking for something that he feels like he didn't monitor correctly. He also, and not to be argumentative at all, he allows too, on the inspections and the COs that were issued to the builder, to make sure that sidewalks went in as well.
Well, is a PUD, is it individuals that you go, I mean, I know you're going to inspect the house, but on the, the CO on them, isn't that at the end, when the PUD is finished, as opposed to every house on the sidewalks? I mean, I know a lot of these, they build all the sidewalks at one time.
No, the, I believe, the...
I don't know, I'm asking the question, because I don't know.
Just to clarify, the sidewalks are not a part of the CO, are not a part of the residential inspection or construction process.
And they're in the public right-of-way.
That's correct. The CO, or the, the building permit and the CO for the structure is specific effectively to the structure and the drip line of the structure, being the roof line or drip line. The infrastructure, being the streets, street trees, sidewalks, and all those things, are at the point where the developer's engineer stamps that everything was constructed to the design standards, and it meets those, and then presents that to the city for their consideration of a transition from a performance bond to a maintenance bond. And that's how we arrived at the matter we have for you tonight. The, the perception that this should have been called at the CO phase is simply a misperception that's not accurate, as part of the inspection process.
And that's why I was thinking, because they're pods now instead of PUDs. I think this was a PUD when it was started, is that the name for it?
Yeah.
And it's different than that one that was in here earlier, that there's going to be four individual houses that will, you will inspect that at every time a house is completed. On the four houses, the one that was earlier?
The CO is never tied to the sidewalk.
Your CO is never tied to your sidewalk.
Okay.
Again, like Spence said, it's in public right-of-way, and it's infrastructure, not building it.
Had, had that gentleman have kept the sidewalks, there would have been a bond in place to ensure the sidewalks were installed correctly, to, to, to inspect when it's completed and finally installed.
Again, it's, it's a bit, it's a bit disingenuous on part of the developer to say, "Hey, y'all should have caught this." Well, no, these were your plans that you drew up, that you presented, that you're responsible for, okay? That's on the developer, to make sure he's doing his job correctly. At the end of the day, buck stops there, right? And again, if this board wants to vote to allow an exception, which I'm not really a fan of, then it should be seventy-five percent of the total cost of a five-foot sidewalk, not that one foot addition. And oops, slap on the wrist, this needs to be, hey, if you don't do what you're supposed to do, you're still going to pay a percentage of that total amount. This isn't a, you know, let's not worry about it, it would be cheaper just to pay that a little bit later. You know, it needs to hurt a little, to make sure you have future performance. But again, I, I'm not a fan of it. I, I don't want to set that precedence, because as soon as this gentleman's done, we have to have a conversation with another, another gentleman in this building about another issue. So I, I don't want to go down that road of each time they come in here and say, "Well, you did it for the last guy, you did it for the guy before him." I, I understand this is expensive, I'm not making light of that in any way, shape, or form, however, it's a problem, it's just not our problem. Do it correctly. I'm done.
For clarity, are people living in these homes yet? So if we were to say, "Hey, we're not going to allow this variance today," then they would have a construction crew in front of their homes ripping out sidewalks to put in new sidewalks? Correct?
At some point, yes, sir, that's correct.
But that's what we said in February, we're still here.
I don't know, I feel like, I completely agree with what you're saying, Commissioner Burks, absolutely. At the same time, though, I don't, I feel like we're supposed to be representing those citizens, too, and I don't like the idea of telling someone to go back and rip out sidewalks while people are living there in those homes currently. It's just a crappy situation all around.
Has anybody made a motion to any of this yet?
No motion, no, sir.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept a waiver on this, to be seventy-five percent of the full five-foot width of the sidewalk, that's still cheaper than him tearing it out and replacing it. And, we, we, it wasn't designed to build one foot, it was designed to be a five-foot sidewalk. And, lieu of that, they can figure out how to make it right, or they, you know, as far as I'm concerned, that's it. And that's my motion.
And if you want to also capture that maintenance bond that they requested, if the amount is eighty-three thousand, Mr. Owen?
Yes.
So a motion? Do I need to rescind a second, or just, and have him amend? I think, do I need to rescind the second and have him amend to include?
You can just amend his current motion, or whichever.
Just amend on, then Mr. Anderson, I'll draw.
So your motion on the table would be, to be seventy-five percent of the full five-foot width would be the, the waiver fee to pay for the sidewalks, and then we would also accept maintenance bond of eighty-three thousand, if that's satisfied?
That would be my motion.
Okay. So first and a second. Mr. Gordon, you have any discussion or questions?
I would ask that to be amended to the hundred and twenty-five percent of the one-foot sidewalk.
As a point of clarity, doesn't have the opportunity to ask for, he's not a voting member.
No, absolutely, yeah. I think, is any additional discussion? I think we, in the same boat of, of what Mr. Burks says, in February, we talked about this, and I said, "We need to replace it. We're going to set a precedent where the next guy's going to do four foot, and we're going to be stuck with it." So I think unfortunately, it does have to kind of set the example to try and prohibit and prevent this from happening again, and if that's the full five-foot fee that captures that, then I agree. Is there any additional discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed?
Nay.
Thank you, Mr. Gordon. All right, we will move, and we have one more, if anyone wants to make a motion for the additional citizens' comment to discuss tonight.
I would say, since we made a motion for the first gentleman, we need to make a motion for the second gentleman, and I don't remember the names or anything, but...
So it's...
Whatever it would take to make that motion.
Sweet, Sweetbrier Springs, Mr. Cunningham, in regard to curb and gutter. So we have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
There's a second. Any additional discussion? This is to amend the agenda, the approved agenda, to add this new business item. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay, so this, and I think staff can speak to this more, we got a little email about it before, it's, currently we're waiting on additional detail for the storm drains. Currently, the way it would configure, the storm drains are going to be increased more into the road than typical standard, because the storm drain's a thirty-inch depth, and the curb is twenty-four. Is that right?
The curb was originally designed to be thirty, I believe it's twenty-four now. I believe it's eighteen, and the, and the storm drain sits out to twenty-four inches, which puts it into the asphalt. As it's currently constructed, the, the approved road width, back of curb to back of curb was twenty-nine feet. It's now twenty-eight feet. The, the issue that we have is, the storm drain inlets were originally designed to be constructed within the concrete, within the curb itself. The storm drain inlets now extend from the curb into the asphalt, and the contractor has installed basically wings or winged access points, so that the concrete flares out to the width of the, or the depth into the road of the storm drain inlet itself. So you have an S-shaped curb as it relates to the areas where the storm drain inlets are. We did meet on-site, the questions that we had were, number one, would the board be willing to grant a waiver from twenty-nine, twenty-eight feet, which is clearly the privilege of the, of the board if they were to do that. The other concern we had was, from the city staff standpoint, the original design to have these storm drain inlets within the concrete curb and out of the roadway was for future road maintenance. We were attempting in every way to have the storm drain inlets not be a part of the asphalt or connected to the asphalt. So for future purpose, when we go and resurface the road, we simply resurface a straight line, curb to curb, rather than the S-shaped curve that would include the extended storm drain inlets. The question that we had on-site was whether or not, from a drainage calculation standpoint, the...